Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the business meetings for the City of Prattville. We have no public hearings tonight, so we will move directly into our council agenda. At this time, we do invite you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, as well as our invocation, which will be given tonight by Counselor Stritchett.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and all the joy and blessings that it brings. Come to you, Lord, tonight with a thank you of mercy for our community as we survive the storms over the weekend that were in our sights. Thank you for sparing our great community and for the communities around us that are suffering loss of property and life. Give them strength, give them courage, and let them know your grace, God, to get through their anxieties and fears. Thank you for this day, and may this panel be pleasing to you with our decisions. Lead us, and thank you for all that you do, and forgive us of our sins. In Christ's name, amen.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Sanders?
Here.
Counselor Jackson?
Here.
Counselor Chambers?
Here.
Counselor Merrick?
Here.
Counselor Whaley?
Here.
Counselor Stritchett?
Here.
Counselor Bing?
Here.
Having a quorum present, I do call our meeting to order. The character trait of the month is discernment, understanding the deeper reasons why things happen. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the City Council Meeting, which was held on March the 4th, 2025. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. And our minutes are approved. This time, we will welcome comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. We'll have anyone who wishes to speak on any item that we will be voting on tonight on our agenda, please line up against the right-hand side to you between the two walls, sign your name and address on the podium, and come forward. You will have three minutes to address the public. Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, please come forward with your report.
Yes, ma'am. And thank you. You know, it's good to see everyone again, especially after the storm, and thank you for the prayer, Mr. Stritchett, Counselor Stritchett. You know, as we move, as we were very, very fortunate with that event, the good Lord blessed us one more time again, and he has blessed us in so many other ways, and one of the ways is our different seasons of the year. We're moving from winter into spring, and a lot of things are going to be turning green. And so with that, Madam President, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask for a point of privilege and ask for some of our green thumbs of the community to come forward and present a lot of knowledge for us all.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. George Walthall, I'm a member of the local Master Gardeners. I've got some ladies here and a gentleman there, all representing our local Master Gardeners. We've got for you an invitation. On the 3rd of April, we'll have start the Alabama Master Gardeners Association Annual Meeting. We'll have 285 participants here, plus about 20 vendors. So it's going to have a big impact on our community. We will have, I got to ask this question. How many people know where Prattbillie's Garden is? About half.
Good number.
About half. Well, and in Prattbillie's Garden, we will have from 5:30 to 7:30, a meet and greet with all of the folks coming from all across the state. Now, the reason that we're so proud is that, if you'll notice, this seat right here is the impact statement of what Master Gardeners did for the State of Alabama last year, and that's $11 million given back to the state. This piece of paper, if you want to use 15 or 20 or 40, you'll see that at $20 an hour, we gave back to this community $245,000. That's a big contribution. I don't believe we have, I've learned that Master Gardeners is probably the strongest and most involved in our city. We have also worked with the city, and we've got, these are just some samples, we'll have a couple of signs going up to point where the Prattbillie's Garden is and where the Demonstration Garden is. I've, you know, probably voted on when we put the Demonstration Garden is, and for 20 years, I rode by there and didn't know what that brick on the floor down there until I started working in it. We just think it's so important that we learn about our community. Y'all do a great job locally in downtown planting flowers. I'd love to see us get a lot more trees planted, but hopefully that'll come. And if there's anything that I have missed, because I've got my piece of paper back there, anybody that y'all can think of anything?
I'd like for you to emphasize 27,000 pounds.
Oh, yeah. Well, we only, the Demonstration Gardeners all over the State of Alabama, and several things they got grow more, give more, and they encourage local Master Gardeners, they encourage associations to give back. And in our particular thing, let's see, last year...
It was over 1,600.
1,600 pounds we gave to the AICC. That's fresh vegetables. That's pulled that morning, cleaned, and taken down there. So it's really a good deal for everybody, and we just appreciate the city allowing us to continue to have that spot, and we'll be back down next year to ask for more money. But, oh, I, thank y'all.
No, no, thank you, and thank the Master Gardeners, and I think we all remember, just recently, we had our special event in Pratt Park, giving away trees and everything. There was a great turnout by the community, and I tell you, I do have two thumbs, and neither one of them are green, but thank you, and also not only for the Master Gardeners, but for the Powell's Event, the shredding event was a big success, and I think the community so, so much appreciates it, and hopefully we'll have more and more participation from our public and for volunteerism and everything. But again, thank you, Madam President, for the point of privilege there. I do want to thank the Todd County EMA, Prattville Fire Department, and Police Department for setting up the Emergency Operations Center at the Public Safety Building during our storms over the weekend. Thankfully, we did not have to utilize the EOC after the storms, but some of our neighboring counties and others in the state were not as fortunate. I was able to have some communications with the mayor and some friends down in Troy, and I hope everybody will continue to pray for them in Plantersville and other communities as well, because the good Lord only knows what he's going to be putting at us, and the only thing we can do is be ready for whatever we think is necessary. But, you know, like I said, some of our neighboring counties and others in the state were not as fortunate as Prattville. I ask that you please keep those that were affected by these storms in your thoughts and prayers. These types of situations, you see the training, training, and teamwork come together with all departments, our Public Works, Engineering, Parks and Recreation, Fire, Police, Finance, and the Executive Department, and also including our Baptist Hospital and county friends and communities. We're all ready for the public safety of all. I also appreciate Lyman Woodfin for opening the new Prattville Kindergarten School as a shelter for the community to utilize this during the weather event. I understand there's over 200 citizens that decided to show up there during this event. Also, I want to thank Uncle Mix and Marco's Pizza for providing food during the operation of the EOC. Just sometimes those logistics are underestimated and underappreciated until the event happens, and so I want to thank all of those, because it takes us all, it takes that village. But last week, we were able to make the donation of two ambulances by the grace of our council here, so I want to say again, thank you, because those two ambulances are going to the Prattville Fire Department, from the Prattville Fire Department to the Todd County Board of Education, and also from CAC, and I think some of that, not only does it help develop our workforce for that division of our community, but it also provides that additional security that we all need as we get older, and I think we're all getting a little bit older as we move along. But these ambulances will help with educational training and workforce development in our community, and I think this is a great opportunity to partner with our Todd County Board of Ed and also CAC. I am happy to announce that the Todd County Prattville Library is officially back open. The library opened back up today around 4 o'clock, and I appreciate day structures and the City of Prattville crews. There are several of our red team, as I call them, our fire department was able to pick things up and put things down, and that was really so, so much appreciated, but also the support of the council for the cleanup and the work that has been done on the library to get us to this point, and we will be monitoring it ever so often, and also reviewing it very carefully in the next six months or so, make certain it's safe for everyone. But the City of Prattville crews, we're able to get to this temporary solution, completed to reopen this service in our community, so thank you all. Counselors, March is Certified Governmental Financial Management Month in the City of Prattville. You know, I am so, so appreciated of not only our finance department, which is mostly somebody here in the back of the room, Daniel Oakley and Carly G., but it also takes the other department heads as well to work with them to get us to this point. But, you know, it's been an honor that the City of Prattville has been recognized for many years now, and, you know, this is a professional certification awarded by AGA, demonstrating competency in governmental accounting, auditing, financial reporting, internal controls, and budgeting, budgeting at the federal, state, and local levels. I'd like to commend our finance department for all their hard work as we continue to maintain fiscal accountability and transparency. And as we all know, if we're going to have a project, it takes several different things. Now, I've stood here before many times in the past and asked for the three Ts, the time, the tools, and the talent, and that means we have to have great people, great projects, and also great financing to get all that, make that happen. So I think there's one reason for Prattville is moving in the direction it is. Madam President, in my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that Counselor Stritchett and I have both stopped by the Prattville Library this afternoon, seen the work that was done, checked out things, and both of us are toting books, so they are open for checkout, and in fact, my book came from the new book section, so to encourage the public who has been concerned about whether or not there have been any new books ordered in the recent past, certainly there have been, because I brought home two of those from the new book section today. So we encourage our citizens to jump back in, support the library, do anything you can from the public assistance part. We're happy, of course, I'm sure they have ways that they could receive donations and volunteerism and all of that, so get back involved with your library. I know that I will be. We're all excited about that. Any other comments or questions for the mayor from the council? Yes, or Mr. Jackson?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Mayor, being the longest tenured elected official up here, I've had some questions from constituents recently about discretionary funds. I told them that we don't receive any, but some of them are under the impression that we get discretionary funds, and they said that when Councilman Wood was here, but I told them that we don't do that, but they're under the impression that we do. But do you mind telling us when you recall, if you ever recall us ever having discretionary funds?
Well, I appreciate you being called old in as eloquent way as you possibly could there, but thank you, but as long as since I've been here as mayor, council, and my father also served two terms on the City Council in the 80s and 90s, and to my recollection, there's never been any kind of discretionary funds available to the council. It's always been project by project, and because as I've told some other folks, projects are sort of really driven a few different ways. Some of them are driven by departments, some of them are just reoccurring projects, just like, I think everybody here has heard me say before, I got good news and bad news. We got paving, and we got paving, and that's the good news and bad news. But, you know, and then other times, it are special projects that, you know, there's so much quality of life for our community, and so, but as far as I'm aware, from the 80s up to today, I've never heard of any for the City of Prattville.
Yes, sir. Thank you, because like I said, we've had individuals, I guess they think the individual council members have these discretionary funds that they can just magically give out through the community, and I told them that I'm completely unaware, so thank you for clearing that up. Thank you.
Well, thank you. You know, I think our budgeting process is very, very solid, especially with the financial team that we have here. It has come a long, long ways from lump sum budgeting to line item, and then as we continue to move forward, trying to project for projects in the future, and we have been able to receive some grant monies for, whether it's been some of our wastewater department, some of our sidewalk projects, or so many other projects, but we're still looking to help benefit our community, and sometime in April, some of us will not be here for some of the special events that was recently mentioned with our Master Gardeners. Some of us will be out of town trying to find more grant monies coming into the community. And Councilman Whaley, I know we've talked about a traffic light, you guys have voted on it. It is supposed to be the materials are supposed to be coming in April, so hopefully we will have another traffic light sometime in May or June right there at McQueen Smith and Terra. So that's been a long time coming, just like so many other projects, whether it's Stanley Jensen, or Newton Park, or North Island Park. So I'm very proud of the progress we're going to make.
And one other question, as far as the paving, when will the paving? Because I know we discussed this in the Streets Drainage Committee meeting, but I think we're going to have some paving. Is it going to be maybe in the latter part of the spring?
Yes, you know, since the pandemic, there's been a lot of challenges with so many of our, whether it's the traffic light, as I mentioned, or the, you named the project, because of the world has changed, and so when we do have a final date on whether it's the traffic light, or the North Island Park, or the paving, I'll make certain and I'll let everyone know on that one. But we do have some additional paving going on on 31, which is an out-doubt project. I had been told that we're going to have several fewer barrels, construction barrels on Highway 82 in the next month or so. So anyway, we, I will keep everyone informed. I know there's been some question about some of our other projects, whether it's the bank project, the City Council area project, or North Island Park, Pratt Park, also Stanley Jensen, or Newton Park, and I will be working on a list to give everyone, hopefully at the next council meetings, that way we all will know what kind of timeline that we are anticipating. It is a very educated guesstimate. That's all I can say at this time.
And I was also, because we were talking about paving, and I know we have Paxton went over some of the paving, potential paving, streets that we're going to pave here in the community, and I was discussing how you guys have a plan in place, how you guys go through the city and measure and determine which streets need to be paved, and it seems to be a little bit of confusion as to how that works, but I was explaining to them that you guys have, that you're very thorough in determining which streets are paved, like Martin Luther King, you know, that was paved, and...
And you and I worked a lot on that one.
Yes, you and I had to make some calls. I think I was in DC at one point, when we talked about trying to work through some other avenues to make sure that was paved, but do you briefly, mind briefly just explain that you guys have a, that we have a plan in place?
Correct.
Where we determine which streets are paved each year?
Yes, and a lot of that is very fluid, like there was an asphalt paving plan put out, and at one point in time, we're supposed to increase the budget on it 3% every year, but that has been moved to 5% because of the cost, basically the cost of living, and I will have to give our former engineer, Robbie Anderson, and our current engineer, Paxton Reese, for all their hard work on that, because they do go out and evaluate. And just even today, I turned in a work order over in one subdivision right off of Doster Road, so if anybody here is listening or seeing this, please, if you see something, say something, get on our work order system and be able to put it in. Pictures say so much, so if you not only put it in in print, but also send in a picture, that way our engineer and others can get out there on that one. But we do have a lot of projects ongoing, and Fairview Avenue, SDAC, the company on site, they are behind schedule. We're doing everything we can to get them back up to schedule, but I will have to give a lot of accolades to our community. I don't know about the councilists here, but I have not heard a lot of complaints about the delay in traffic or the work that's going on. I think everybody sees that there's a very, very needed project, so.
Do any other counselors have any comments or questions for the mayor this evening? Yes, or Mr. Whaley?
Mayor, going back to the library for just a second, because I've had several calls, and I want to make sure I'm relaying the correct information.
Okay.
So the library's open, and the fix that we did was a fix just to get us, to get the building back open. We didn't, we didn't fix the issue, because that was, if I recall, close to a million dollars, or three quarters of a million dollars.
About a half a million, yes, sir.
Yeah. So long-term plan is to relocate the library, or search for other opportunities for a home for the library?
I would not use the word fix if I was speaking. It is a temporary opportunity for us to get the library back open.
Okay.
City crews, forces have been out there, everything from our engineering, our public works, our fire department. We do have it back open. It is safe for public occupancy. We had a structural engineer to guide us and lead us to this point, so it is up and operational. I would say that everything is on the table. The history of Prattville, I think, really shows that since day one that the library was built, it started settling. Right. And I hate to put good money after bad, and I think the 20,000-plus that we have spent into it for this latest project is money well spent, but I think that everything needs to be on the table. I do have several thoughts and ideas myself that I don't really want to repeat here at this moment, but I've talked, we have several needs around Prattville. The library is one, the swimming pool is another, and I can go on and on and on, but we have, we have several options that I, hopefully, will be able to come back later on and be able to speak openly and honestly to the public, but at this point in time, I think it's a little premature.
Right. I'm just, I was asked, are we going to put a Band-Aid on it, and that's going to be the permanent, we're just going to leave it like that? And I don't, I hope that's not what we plan to do.
That is my thoughts and ideas, but it's where it's going to have to be a, the village, as I mentioned earlier. It's going to take us all to get it up and operational, and I think the library is important to different entities of the public for different reasons. I've seen eight to, I wouldn't say 98, but pretty close in there, that utilizes our library. I think it's utilized a lot more here in Prattville than some other communities that I've seen, but I hopefully, whether it's the, because of the internet, or because of the paperback, or the hardback copies here, but I do see in the future, we have a lot of decisions to make, whether it's going to be in our Parks and Recs quality of life, or our library, which is, you know, that's sort of a quasi-type entity with us. We do help fund it with the county, but we actually don't run it, but we do own the property, the dirt, but the city, county, and federal government actually help fund the building itself, but we have been doing the heavy lifting right recently, so I'm very proud that we've been able to get it to the point that we have it now, and look forward to the future. Thank you. Thank you.
Do any other counselors have any questions or comments for the mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this point, we will have a report on the state of our city finances from Mr. Oakley.
We'll go for it.
Do I have a side of order? Is that what you're saying?
No, I was wondering about the committees.
I have that next. Did I, do I normally do finances after committees?
Yeah, you normally have a...
Would you like for the committees to go first? Do you need to hear our reports?
No, I would love to go first.
All right, well, you go for it.
Thank you.
It's your birthday.
Love it. So you've got your packet in front of you. First page is the General Fund Revenue Report, and it shows that we have received $28,269,937 for the fiscal year to date, and this represents a 3.07% increase over the same period in the prior year. The next page is the Tax Breakdown Comparison, and on the tax side, we were down 0.86% when compared to the previous February. The next three pages show the general fund expenses broken down by department, and with 41.7% of the fiscal year complete, we have spent 33.7% of the budgeted expenditures in the general fund. Next page is the Wastewater Enterprise Fund Income Statement, and the wastewater fund reported a net income from operations of $356,637 for February. Operating expenses and overall expenses were under budget at 37.7% and 34.7% respectively. Next page is the Sanitation Enterprise Fund Income Statement. The sanitation fund reported a net income of $130,916 for the month. Operating expenses are under budget at 39.5%, and overall expenses are also under budget at 35%. Next page is the Judicial Special Revenue Fund Income Statement. The judicial fund reported a net loss of $142,284 for February, and this was due to the quarterly Metro Jail payment that was made. Expenses overall continue to come in under budget for this fund around 31%. Next page is the Bank Balances Report, and it shows that the total of all bank balances citywide at the end of the month was $45,261,228. And the last page in your packet is the Accounts Payable and Debt Balances Report. The total outstanding AP and debt balance at the end of February was $53,368,218, while the city's non-enterprise fund debt was $22,545,218.
Thank you, Mr. Oakley, for your early report. Do any counselors have any questions or comments for Mr. Oakley?
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Have to keep you on your feet.
That's right.
At this time, we will move into reports from the council on special committees. Counselor Sanders, do you have a report?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Jackson?
No.
Counselor Chambers?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Merrick?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Whaley?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Stritchett?
And I have none.
Tonight, we have the opportunity to create a consent agenda. Items that could fall on our consent agenda include Resolution Number One, to reappoint Kyle Glover to the Industrial Development Board; Resolution Number Two, to reappoint Sarah N. Thompson to the Industrial Development Board; Resolution Number Three, to reappoint Dewan Walker to the Industrial Development Board; Resolution Number Four, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 1811 Jenny Drive, a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances; Resolution Number Five, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 106 Lilac Drive, a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances; Resolution Number Six, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 325 New Moon Drive, a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Do I hear a motion to create such a consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of creating this consent agenda, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. The consent agenda is now before us. Do I hear a motion to adopt this consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting this consent agenda, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. And the consent agenda is adopted. At this point, we will move into our regular agenda. Resolution Number One on our regular agenda is to initiate the termination of membership process with Central Alabama... process with Central Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission. Counselor Stritchik, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes. Whereas the City of Prattville pays yearly dues for memberships of CRPDC, and whereas the City of Prattville is utilizing international resources that are presently more beneficial to the city, whereas it's the best interest of the citizens of Prattville to terminate membership of CRPDC, and whereas pursuant bylaws of CRPDC, the city council must adopt a formal resolution of withdrawal to begin the process of terminating membership. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council, the City of Prattville, hereby sets forth this decision to withdraw from CRPDC, and hereby initiates the process of a termination of membership with the Central Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution, so moved.
We have a motion. Is there a, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding resolution number one?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir, Mr. Whaley.
I guess, just a couple of questions. And I've, I've had a couple of questions that I talked to the mayor about, and I've, I've thought about it a little bit more since, since having those conversations. I want to make sure, I believe there's strength in numbers. I think that we have been a part of the commission for quite some time, and they do more than just grant writing and administration. I want, I want to make sure that if we're withdrawing, that it's the correct process for us. I realize we have internal resources that can write grants for us. I guess, one question would be, are there, are there any resources available from Carp Deck that would benefit us as far as grant writing and administration? Number two, we, we passed a resolution last meeting to hire a firm to assist in the search for a city planner. Carp Deck also has some planning capabilities that they are able to offer. Is there anything that they can offer that would help us as a bridge until we get to the point where we have a full-time city planner? And then the third question would be, as far as economic development, I realize that we have an economic developer in the city, and we're, we're very qualified in that area. But there again, are there going to be regional things looked at for economic development in, in our region that we're not going to be, I know we will pursue it on our own, but I want, I want to ensure that there's not some coordination and some cooperation from our economic developer to the commission that would be beneficial in trying to recruit an economic development project to our, to our area or to our city. I'm not, I guess my biggest, that's three questions, I know, but I'm, I'm having a little heartache with saying that we're, they haven't been successful in grant writing. And if that's all we're using them for, and we're not utilizing any of the other functions that they offer, and if there is no other benefit in any of the other areas that they offer, you know, then, then maybe that's what we need to do. But I would, then I would ask, if they're not being beneficial, have we gone and relayed that information to them? And have we offered any solutions to help make it more beneficial for us as a member of the commission?
To whom are you directing your questions?
I guess.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
And, yes, and thank you for the, for the questions there. And I have served as a board member before, and, and I have personally seen, and I'll be glad to talk with folks, anybody here on the city council, about some of the challenges with Carp Deck. But the City of Prattville has been connected with Carp Deck for about two, about, about 20 years now. And if you look at the amount of monies, because right now, it's a little more than $13,000 a year that we do pay into them. It is based off of population. And I have talked with the, and I'm going to leave some names out of this, since we're being recorded. But I have talked with the, the chair, another mayor, so we've been able to talk very openly and honestly. And they are looking at maybe some other options that maybe the city can come back in. But at this point in time, if you look at the amount of monies we have spent with them, the amount of monies that we have, or grants, or other projects, we have been able to be awarded because of the partnership, the dollar amount is just, the math does not add up. So, I'm hopingly that with this action, because it is very uncommon for a community like Prattville to step out of this. But we're not tied to this Carp Deck, Carp Deck is what they're called, Central Alabama. We can actually use other planning divisions as well around, around the state. But anyway, right now, at this point in time, there's been several different challenges ongoing for quite some time. There's not been a lot of progress in improving those challenges. And I think that this might be the best way to help make those changes as needed. So.
Oh, go ahead.
May I jump into, just kind of piggyback off of one of his questions. In my experience in the years that I've been on council, I cannot remember ever utilizing Carp Deck for any item except for grants. Can you think of a time when we've used them for anything else?
They have been tied with a couple of our economic development projects as they come in, but it's been very few. And our, we do have a very good staff, whether it's our police, our fire, economic development, or with Dawn Russell, sorry, I forgot her name there for a moment. It was actually a part of our grant writing. So, she has been very much a part of trying to build a relationship as much as I had for some time. But, but there's been very, very little success or return on our, on our investment with this corporate, with this group.
So, is, is that, have we ever, have they ever been successful?
Yes.
Because we've been in it 20 years, so I guess I would wonder why we stayed 20 years if, if they had never been successful. So, if we look at the overall timeframe that we've been a part of the commission, and we look at the benefits that they've, that they've been for us, and the monies that they've been able to help us to get, would that help equal out the cost? I guess is where I'm looking at. And have, have we offered them suggestions that might help make the commission itself stronger, so that it could be more beneficial to us and other members? Because, I mean, I think, I think a collective voice is, is stronger than someone being removed from the situation to make a point, and then hoping that somebody else fixes it so we can go get back in it.
Well, the previous chair, who is no longer with us, we, I had had several conversations with him, and there was not a lot of changes. There was a lot of challenges, and I'll have to say, no changes at all. Now, the current chair, we do communicate, and hopefully, there might be some. And some of it is also, there's been some conversations, because I know you also had a conversation with him, that going from the, the membership dues, because the membership dues, I guess, just gets you technically, I guess, to the table. And then as you have projects, then they generally charge 10% of that project, or whatever it might happen to be. So, just because you pay in 13,000 or so plus, that does not stop the, the payments coming in from different projects on it. But they are looking, they are looking at maybe there's some way of changing that calculation. And, but there has been numerous challenges that I'll be glad, again, to, to discuss with, you know, the council members on the side.
Yeah. I guess my, my only final question, you, you said we could utilize another agency or region. Are we going to have to join that region and pay dues if we want to utilize them for any of the services?
Not that I'm aware of. Now, there might be a federal grant that might be tied to being part of an organization. But over the 20 years or so that I can think of, that has never been something that the City of Prattville's had to do, to deal with, or been awarded. So, right now, I'm going to say, I'm very confident in saying no. But it could happen.
They're, they're changing the way we get and allocate, and we expend federal money every day, so.
Most certainly. And again, some of us will be going to DC in the next month or so, trying to gain some more of the, the federal, some of our monies. Hopefully, we'll be able to bring those back to Prattville to put them to, to good use. That's also a little bit like our MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization. Those are a lot of our tax dollars that get sent to either the federal government or the state government, and we, we go to it, myself, city planner, when we get another one, and also our city engineer, and some others that go to it to help to pull these projects together, which is Fairview Avenue, some of the work being done on Highway 31, some of our sidewalk projects, and so many other projects as well.
Is there further discussion regarding resolution number one?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hearing none. All in favor of resolution number one, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. And any abstentions. And resolution number one is adopted. Item number two is an ordinance to establish the use of D-200 electronic vote counting system and the express vote ADA compliant ballot marking device, or any subsequent model devices utilized by the Otoga County Commission in compliance with Section 17-7-21 Code of Alabama 1975 as amended in the City of Prattville municipal elections. Counselor Chambers, will you introduce this ordinance for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas Chapter 7 of Title 17 of the Code of Alabama 1975 as amended, and the regulations adopted pursuant thereto by the Alabama Electronic Voting Committee provide for the use of electronic vote counting systems. And whereas Section 17-7-21 Code of Alabama 1975 as amended provides that a municipality may, in its discretion, by adoption of an appropriate ordinance, authorize, adopt, and direct the use of electronic vote counting systems for use in all elections held in such municipality. Now therefore be ordained by the city council, the City of Prattville, that for all elections held subsequent to the passage of this ordinance, the use of the DS-200 electronic vote counting system and the express vote ADA compliant ballot marking, marking device, or any subsequent model device that the Otoga County Commission shall utilize, which complies with Section 17-7-21 Code of Alabama 1975 as amended, and any regulations adopted pursuant thereto is hereby authorized for reporting, counting, and tabulating of any and all election results, be it further obtained, obtained, or ordained, excuse me, by the city council, that the mayor is hereby authorized to file a copy of this ordinance with the Alabama Secretary of State, as provided in Section 17-7-21 Code of Alabama 1975 as amended. Be it further ordained that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in any manner are conflicting with, herewith are hereby repealed. This ordinance shall become effective upon its adoption and publication as required by law. So moved, Madam President.
We have an, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. By point of order, this must be suspended, the rules tonight, in order for us to vote on item number two. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk, will you conduct a roll call vote in order to suspend the rules?
Counselor Sanders?
Yes.
Counselor Jackson?
Yes.
Counselor Chambers?
Yes.
Counselor Merrick?
Yes.
Counselor Whaley?
Yes.
Counselor Stritchik?
Yes.
Counselor B?
Yes.
The rules are now suspended, and this ordinance is properly before us. Is there any discussion on item number two? Hearing none. All in favor, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Jackson.
Quick question. Is this a machine that we've been using in the past with our past elections? You know, people are always skeptical and concerned, but just to ease people's minds, is this a machine that we've used for previous elections here in our city?
Ms. Clerk, we will allow you to, to answer this one for us, please.
These are the same machines that the Otoga County Commission have used in the election since, I believe, 2016. This is more for housekeeping. What did change was the ADA compliant tab, marking machine that we used, the express votes. We did not have it specified out in the ordinance itself. We had it specified out in a resolution that we did in an agreement with the county. So, this was housekeeping just to notify y'all that it was the express vote ADA marking machine that we're using. But it does not tabulate anything. Only the DS-200 tabulates, and that's the same one that's been used.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to clear that up for the record, because like I said, people are always concerned and worried about hacking and voter manipulation. So, we just wanted to clear that. Thank you.
Is there further discussion on item number two? Hearing none. All in favor of ordinance number two, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. And ordinance number two is adopted. Number three is a resolution to amend the 2025 fiscal year budget and award bid number 025003 to David Bulger Incorporated for Vista Point Park improvements for the Parks and Recreation Department at a total cost not to exceed $1,455,475. Counselor Stritchik, will you introduce the resolution for us, please?
Yes. Whereas the City of Prattville desires to increase connectivity to improve the facilities for citizens at Vista Point Park, and whereas Parks and Recreation has specifications drafted for desired park improvements, and whereas two sealed bids received, opened and read aloud on March 11th, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. in the dining room of the Doster Community Center, and David Bulger Incorporated was the lowest responsible bidder with a cost of $1,455,475 for said improvement project. Whereas this is a partially budgeted expense for Capital Projects Fund. Now therefore be resolved by the city council, the City of Prattville, that fiscal 2025 budget is hereby amended as follows. Decreased Capital Projects Fund Doster Well Improvements, $237,000, $237.75. Increased Capital Projects Fund Vista Point Parks Improvement, $237,075. Be it further resolved that the city council hereby awards bid number 025-003 to David Bulger Incorporated at a cost not to exceed $1,455,475 for said improvement project, and said fund are approved and appropriated from fiscal budget line, 20 Capital Projects Fund Vista Point Improvements. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute, execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution, so moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion on resolution number three? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution number three, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. And resolution number three is adopted. Resolution number four is to amend the fiscal year 2025 budget and release the funds for the exterior updates at Fire Station Number One to NBC Acoustics Incorporated at a cost not to exceed $51,300. Counselor Whaley, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas a need has been identified for exterior updates to the windows and doors at Fire Station Number One, 942 East Main Street, and whereas NBC Acoustics Incorporated has the expertise to provide said updates at a cost not to exceed $51,300. And whereas pursuant to Section 39-2-1 Code of Alabama 1975 as amended, said updates constitute a public works project, and whereas Section 39-2-2 Code of Alabama 1975 as amended allows contracts for public, public works projects under $100,000 to be let without bidding. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville that the FY 2025 budget is hereby amended as follows. Decrease fire building maintenance, $51,300. Increase fire capital outlay, $51,300. Be it further resolved that funds in the amount not to exceed $51,300 for said updates are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to NBC Acoustics Incorporated, and said funds are approved and appropriated from FY 25 Budget Line Item Fire Capital Outlay. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. Madam President, I so moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on resolution number four? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution number four, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. And resolution number four is adopted. And Resolution Number Four is adopted. Resolution Number Five is to authorize the mayor to enter into a general services agreement with Krebs Engineering Incorporated for the North Highland Park Improvement Project for the Parks and Recreation Department at a total cost not to exceed $62,060. Counsel Stritchick, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes. Whereas Parks and Recreation has identified a need for general engineering services for the North Highland Park Improvement Project, whereas Krebs Engineering Incorporated has the expertise to provide engineering services at a cost not to exceed $62,060, and whereas Section 39-2-2 D1 Code of Alabama 1975 as amended allows contracts to secure service with engineers possessing a high degree in professional skill to be let without bidding. And whereas this is a budgeted expense in the Parks and Recreation Department, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the mayor is hereby authorized to enter an agreement with Krebs Engineering Incorporated for said engineering services and funds not to exceed $62,060 are hereby approved and appropriated from fiscal 2025 budget line item Parks and Recreation Capital Outlay. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution, so moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on Resolution Number Five? Hearing none. All in favor of Resolution Number Five, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. And Resolution Number Five is adopted. This concludes the items on tonight's agenda. At this time, the council welcomes any comments from persons present. We'll have anyone who wishes to speak to please line up against this side of the wall. You will sign up your name and address at the podium, and you'll have three minutes to address the council. Yes, sir. Mr. Marty?
Evening, counsel. I want to tell you a little story. Two weeks ago, we had a very large dead limb removed from my shop, and it was on a Wednesday morning when the tree crew came back to haul everything off, and they set up in front of the house. Well, Wednesday's when we have trash picked up on Wright Street. So right at 7:30, the city trucks started coming down the street, but they couldn't get to my house because we had too much stuff parked in front of the junk that I put out. I figured, no problem, I'll just pull it back in the backyard, and I'll put it back out next Wednesday. Well, before, after the city went past and the crew finished up about an hour later, before I could get everything back into the backyard, I heard the city truck in front of the house. So they had gone and emptied a load, and were going back to the neighborhood, back towards Poplar Street, and they decided to stop and pick up the stuff that they couldn't get three hours before. Now, I didn't expect them to do that. It was a nice gesture, and that just kind of shows you what kind of folks we got taking care of us. So a lot of times, the public works guys don't get much recognition, but it was a nice gesture for what they did.
We appreciate hearing that so much. Thank you for the positive note, and I believe that Mr. Tracy was here just a second ago. I'm not sure if he's still here to hear that, but we appreciate all his department does every time, and you can expect that out of just about any department in Prattville. Thank you so much for sharing that with us. Yes, ma'am. State your name and address for the clerk, please.
Jackie Nix, 706 Running Brook Circle, Prattville. I want to thank everyone for your efforts to get the library open. Very much appreciate that. However, I do want to express some disappointment at, and this is not on you, but the library itself, that there's no indication that the library reopened. I've been on the website, I've been on the Facebook pages. Last meeting, you had mentioned that it was supposed to open last week, and been monitoring that, but there's just been no communication from the library itself about, that this was coming about. Just, I would ask of you to keep monitoring very closely, because, you know, as mayor, as you said, not putting good money after bad, that they're being good stewards of our tax dollars. You know, not communicating with the public of what's going on, the lack of transparency is very concerning. Just from the last fiscal budget, where they had spent more money on legal fees than they had intended, and they asked for level budgeting, and that includes positions that have not been filled, nor have the positions even been advertised, so they have no intention of filling those positions. So, you know, there needs to be some transparency about where this money is going, because it says one thing in a budget, and they're spending it on something else. So you have the power of the purse. Please, please, hold them accountable. You have more power than obviously us in the public, because we are getting a stone wall. We're not getting information, so please be, be our advocates for our tax dollars, that the library is utilizing these resources appropriately for everyone's benefit in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nix. Any questions or comments from the council? Thank you. At this time, we'll move into our closing comments. Mr. Mayor? Counsel Sanders?
No, ma'am.
Counsel Jackson?
Yes, ma'am. As a city councilor, it's my responsibility to be there for my constituents in times of need, and my heart goes out to all affected by last Thursday's fire in Cosby Court. I want to extend my deepest gratitude to the brave firefighters of the Prattville Fire Department and Chief Bingham, as well as the officers from the Prattville Police Department for their swift response and dedication. Your courage and commitment to protecting our community does not go unnoticed. Thank you for all that you do. I also want to thank those, sincerely thank those neighbors who stepped in to aid the victim. Last Thursday night, they showed so much compassion. Your kindness and support in time of a crisis truly reflects the strength in the heart of our community. Please continue to pray for the victim. I've had an opportunity to speak with some of her family members, and she's still in critical condition. Reminds me of the scripture, Matthew 5:16, it says, "Let your light shine before others, that they may see your good deeds and glorify your Father in heaven." So my heart goes out, and I just appreciate Chief Bingham. I had an opportunity to spend some time with them that night. We had a chance to go through the house, and the victim was truly blessed to still be here. One of the things I talked to him that night about, and I even talked to Chief Thompson today a little bit, was just talking to some of the neighbors, and the pain and the suffering that they saw the victim go through, and it instantly made me think about our firefighters, our policemen, when they go through these traumatic experiences in the therapy, and I asked Chief Bingham that night, what is it that you guys do for our firemen? And I asked Chief Thompson the same thing, what are you through for our guys? And they just talked me through it and told me how they actually have peer counseling, and, you know, they make sure our guys are, you know, mentally prepared and equipped and taken care of, because, you know, until you see something like that, going through it that night, I instantly, my heart just went out, because we think about our firefighters, and I don't know if we truly understand what they do and what they go through until you're actually out there on the scene and experiencing. So my heart goes out to them, and I appreciate you, Chief, and Chief Bingham, and Chief Thompson, and your staffs. Thank you.
Counsel Chambers?
No, ma'am.
Counsel Merrick?
No, ma'am.
Counsel Whaley?
No, ma'am.
Counsel Stritchick?
No, ma'am.
Our next regularly scheduled council meeting will be Tuesday, April 1st, 2025, 6:00 p.m. right here in these chambers. Do we have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say yea. Opposed, nays? We are adjourned.